Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The agenda for this meeting can be downloaded at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Zach Bashir-Tash.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order the October 19th, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Bashir Tash.
Here.
Vice Chair Kater. Commissioner Biddle.
Here.
Commissioner Core. Commissioner Coman.
Here.
Commissioner Neal.
Here.
Agenda Item 2, Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, next item, please. Oh, actually, let me read this. Thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission meeting. The Commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the requests. Planning staff will present facts about the project along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 3A, Public Statements.
Thank you. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the Commission regarding items listed on tonight's agenda? If you are here for consent public hearing items 5A and 5B, now is not the time to speak. You will be given an opportunity to speak at a later time.
Non-agenda item 3B, Public Statements.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the Commission regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 4, There Are No Consent Calendar Items.
Thank you.
Agenda Item 5, Consent Public Hearings.
There is no consent, right? It's all non-consent?
It's all under 5 consent public hearings.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. It's Thursday. Now is the time for consent public hearing items. If an item is not removed by Commissioner staff or a member of the public, the Commission will vote on the items all in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will open all of the consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a consent public hearing item?
Community Commissioner, my name is Pat Boytis, B-O-Y-T-I-S. I reside at 12502 McClure Drive, across from the proposed change in zoning. I have a pre-written speech, if that's okay?
No, actually, we just want to know if you wanted to remove it, so you'll have an opportunity to share that in just a few minutes.
Yes, I am.
So which are you wanting? B?
5B.
5B. Thank you so much. And 5A is a continuation of the previous meeting, so that is also off, right?
Yes, I would like to remove 5A, please.
Okay.
Sir?
Josh Taylor.
Josh Taylor.
Thank you so much, both of you. Okay, there's nothing else. So Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 6, Non-Consent Public Hearing Items.
Perfect. Now is the time for non-consent public hearing items. This is a continuation of public hearing item 5A that was originally opened at the September 21st, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Item 5A was opened, and the Planning Commission requested that it be continued to October 5th in order to allow the applicant time to address certain issues. At the end of October 5th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, item 5A was continued once again to today's meeting as the applicant needed additional time to address pending issues. I want to explain how the public hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all of those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the Commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of the previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us with your staff report?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to ask one of our planners, Noelle Topete, to please come forward.
My name is Noelle Topete, an Associate Planner with the Development Services Department. I'm here to present Agenda Item 5A, Vesting Tentative Parcel Map 12498. As Chair Bashir Tash explained, on September 21st, 2023, the public hearing for Vesting Tentative Parcel Map 12498 was opened and then continued to October 5th, 2023. On October 5th, at the request of staff, Vesting Tentative Parcel Map was continued to today's meeting. So a brief overview of the project. Vesting Tentative Parcel Map 12498 is located in the southwest corner of East Bell Terrace and South Mount Vernon Avenue in southeast Bakersfield. The applicant is requesting a parcel map to subdivide 141.46 gross acres into four industrial parcels and one designated remainder in the M2 general manufacturing zone. Parcel sizes range from 2.22 acres to 58.67 acres and are proposed to be developed for purposes of warehousing and distribution. Staff received correspondence, and the Southwest Mountain State's Regional Council of Carpenters present today will speak more about that correspondence. No other written public comments have been received. Staff recommends approval. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. As previously mentioned, this is a continuation of the public hearing that took place on September 21st, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and then proceed.
Yes, thank you, staff and commissioners. My name is Josh Taylor. I am a representative of the Southwest Mountain State's Regional Council of Carpenters and the President of Carpenters Local 743, and tonight I'm representing the carpenters you see behind me, as well as the rest of the membership. I want to let you know that the carpenters fully support this project, as the developer has committed to working with responsible contractors who will hire locally and will participate in apprenticeship programs, they're state-certified apprenticeship programs. We want to express our full support for this project, as we believe that it will be a benefit to the environment and local economy by practicing protocols that will protect worker health and safety and incorporate adequate environmental mitigation. I would like to first thank the developer for supporting community wealth and the standards here by participating in apprenticeship and uplifting the community. I want to thank the staff for your hard work in the presentation and getting all of this prepared, and I want to thank the commissioners for your actions over the last couple of meetings to get us here today, and we look forward to, hopefully you will vote in favor of staff recommendation to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of the project? Please step to the microphone and identify yourself. Seeing none, does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and then continue. I don't think we need an opportunity for rebuttal if we have no opposition.
Does anyone have any questions from the Commission?
Does any Commissioner have any questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not a time to express your opinion on the matter. It is only time to ask questions.
And we don't need a rebuttal.
No. I will now close the public hearing on appeal, hearing, appeal on the item and return it to the Commission for comment and action. Do I have anyone wanting to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation to approve the project.
And I'll second that.
Commissioner Neal and Biddle, thank you so much. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion passes with Vice Chair Kater and Commissioner Core absent.
Thank you. Now is the time for another non-consent public hearing item, 5B. Thank you, gentlemen. Before we begin, I would like to explain again how the hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the Commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us with your staff report on item 5B?
Yes, I'd like to invite Principal Planner Roque Nino to the podium.
Good evening, Chair Bashir Tash, members of the Plan Commission, and members of the public. My name is Roque Nino, Principal Planner with the City of Bakersfield Planning Division. I am presenting this item tonight on behalf of my staff, Louis Ramirez, Associate Planner Agenda Item 5B is a general plan amendment, Zone Change Number 22-0337, Plan Development Review Number 23-0331, and Modification Number 23-0508. The applicant is McIntosh &amp; Associates on behalf of the Piper Family Trust. The project site is located on approximately 80 gross acres at the northeast corner of South Allen Road and Pensinger Road in southwest Bakersfield. The zone change request is to change the zone classification from R1 One Family Dwelling Zone to R3 PUD Multi-Family Dwelling Planned Unit Development Zone. The general plan amendment request is to change the general plan land use designation from low-density residential to high-medium-density residential. The general plan amendment to the circulation element map is to remove the arterial designation and change to a local street designation for this portion of Pacheco Road between South Allen Road and Buena Vista Road. Currently, these two roadways are not developed in this area. Future roadway improvements along South Allen Road may require some form of grade separation due to the railroad track crossing, so an arterial designation for this portion of Pacheco Road has been determined not to be needed. A modification for reductions of lot size and setbacks are being requested to allow reduced minimum lot sizes from 6,000 square feet to 3,345 square feet. Reduce agricultural setbacks from 30 feet to 5 feet. Reduce railway setbacks from 50 feet to 10 feet. Remove airspace front yard setbacks 45-degree angle. Reduce side yard setbacks from 5 feet to 3 feet on one side of the lot. These modifications will allow for innovative design for the residential neighborhood. The Plan Development Review request was submitted to permit the development of two residential tracks currently being processed as Vesting Tentative Track 7408 and Vesting Tentative Track Map 7415, totaling 497 residential lots. Upon approval of the GPA zone change by your Commission and subsequent City Council, these two Vesting Tentative Track maps will be brought to your Commission for your action. The developer also proposes to develop a 4.7-acre community park in the center of both Vesting Tentative Track maps. This slide illustrates the layout of the subdivisions, coupled with walkable landscape pathways and attached garages, designed to blend with the character of the neighborhood and community. The modification request and Plan Development Review will allow the development of several floor plans ranging from 1,400 square feet, 1,040 square feet to 3,203 square feet. For sequel review, an initial study mitigated declaration was conducted, and it was determined that the mitigation measures, the project would not have a significant effect on the environment. Two comment letters were received during the 30-day circulation period of the MND, which are provided in the staff report. This project followed all public notice requirements, and to date, no comments have been received. On September 12th, 2023, the applicant hosted a community outreach meeting at the Briarwood Park Site where three individuals attended. Concerns that were raised involve changes to their properties, but overall, they relayed positive feedback about access to the proposed park, as the adjacent neighborhood current park site is undeveloped. Therefore, staff recommends your Commission approve the resolutions adopting the mitigated declaration, the general plan amendment, the zone change, the Plan Development Review, and the modification, and recommend the same to the council. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and then proceed.
Good evening, Commissioner Bashir Tash and Planning Commission. My name is Blaine Neptune. I am with McIntosh &amp; Associates, and we are the applicant. We're excited about this project. I've been doing work in Bakersfield for 35 years now. I can't even tell you how many tentative maps and final maps that I've been involved with, and this one has a special place in our company. We've probably been working on this project for a year and a half. We've had more meetings than I've ever had on any map with the city staff and even up to some council members about this. You know, the current Rena allotment for a requirement for Bakersfield is, needs housing, and the cost of construction and financing and interest rates have caused, you know, houses to become, you know, quite expensive, and the only way to combat that is to maybe make some lots smaller and get a little bit more density. So we've done this. We've met with city staff and come to a, what we feel is a really nice project. You'll probably hear some comments tonight about traffic, and I want everybody to know that we are changing the zoning and the land use, but we are capping the dwelling units at 499 currently. In an LR zone, you can have over 500 units, so traffic should not be a concern. There's actually going to be less traffic than if it was built per its entitled use. You can do that with the general plan amendment and zone change. You can cap the number of units. It's an exciting project. There's going to, it's kind of modeled after a project in Clovis that was very successful during the downturn of 2008 called Harlan Ranch, and that project grew as other projects failed. And so we've driven up to Harlan Ranch, and we've modeled this project after it. It's going to have a very nice community park. It's going to be walkable to this community park. This park will be built before the park in the current subdivision to the south that was developed, 6578, that is currently owned by the City of Bakersfield Parks Department, and probably no foreseeable future for that park to be developed. This park, in the conditions, will have a requirement to build it by a certain timeframe. So for those reasons, I know we hope that you support this project and approve it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and then proceed. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and then proceed. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Commission, staff, for letting me speak tonight. I dropped off some paperwork with some petitions and some letters from the affected residents of the area.
Sir, sorry, can you give your name again for the record?
Patrick Boytis, B-O-Y-T-I-S. All right, I'm writing this to express my strong opposition to General Plan Amendment Zone Change Number 22-0337, Plan Development Review 23-0331, and Zone Modification 23-0508. The proposed zoning location at the northeast corner of Pensinger and south, South Allen Road, while the local community may be unable to prevent this rezoning, that in itself will be detrimental to the area. Now, the all residents in the Buena Vista neighborhood are completely opposed to the addition of multi-family high-density housing that will cause severe traffic impact and safety problems, create even more problems with the schools that are already overcapacity and potentially lower the property values of existing community property. The new zoning of 497, if my numbers are correct, will only have two entrance and exits for the whole community. Schools in the area are already reported at overcapacity, and the council should not approve multi-family dwellings that creates or exacerbates the situation, will cause schools concurrent fail if this proposal and/or plans are approved. Property values are likely to go down in this area if multi-family apartments or condominiums are built. Multi-family dwellings are inconsistent with the neighborhood developed in the area. I was disappointed that we were only given eight days of notice for this dramatic switch of, from low-density to high-density in our neighborhood. A majority of Buena Vista residents claimed they did not receive the zoning change letter. I urge you to disprove the proposed rezoning, and from recent meetings and discussions with neighbors, I know my opinions are shared by many who have not managed to attend or sign the petition that I've put forward. I've attached a petition, only, and only advertised it on the neighborhood app for my area, Buena Vista. I had 80 to 90 signatures from the Buena Vista community in opposition to the zoning modification. As you know, it's difficult at this time to obtain signatures due to work schedules and families unwilling to answer their doors to unknown individuals. Many who answered stated that they thought I was a solar salesman which frequented our neighborhood once or twice a week. Every person who was apprised of the request for zoning change were adamantly opposed to it. Only one dissented, and that was only because they were affiliated with the developers and didn't want to jeopardize their situation. I also had individuals from neighboring neighborhoods, I'm not sure how they got my information since I was restricted to my neighborhood, contact me in opposition. With limited time on my hands, I was only able to get about six hours of getting petitions put together or signatures put together, and I attained over 80. These signatures are collected only by me, six hours. In conclusion, I don't believe anyone in this audience or on the panel would want to have a high-density neighborhood in their backyard. Thank you for your continued service and support of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any Commissioner have any questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not a time to express your opinion. It is just a time to ask questions.
Chair Bashir Tash, perhaps other people want to speak?
Oh, yeah, I'm so sorry. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Would you like to speak, though? Commissioner Coman.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Bashir Tash. I appreciate it. This is, first question is for staff and the noticing requirements. Mr. Boykins indicated that they only had eight days to respond to this project. Can you talk about the noticing, what was done for noticing?
Thank you, Commissioner Coman. On noticing, our requirements are that we notify property owners within 300 feet of the property boundary. So all property owners within 300 feet of the boundary itself were notified by USPS mailing. That mailing goes out roughly 10 days in advance, a little bit more if we can, to provide for that 10 days as required by state law. Noticing that, or I should say acknowledging that there are other people in the area beyond that 300 feet, signs are posted on-site at least 20 days in advance. We have confirmation that those signs were posted along Pensinger and, I believe, Allen. So that way, the traveling public could also see the signs, and it was also advertised in Bakersfield, California.
Okay, thank you. Regarding the agricultural setbacks, can you refer to an example of where we've done that before?
I can. We've done it three times in the last several years. I was not prepared to provide those exact locations, but we've done it for maps, or for maps that, but agriculture, agricultural zone land or RS zone land to allow for reduction and setback. So it has been done at least three times in the past that I'm aware of, probably more.
And I apologize for not asking you these questions before, so I appreciate you having some answers, so, thank you. I'm concerned about abandoning Pacheco and whether that's entirely necessary, so I don't know if we need to, if the staff or the developer can talk about that.
Pacheco in the circulation element, and if you look at it, there was a road proposed back when McAllister Ranch was still in existence, and the circulation element still addresses all those roads. Everyone, you know, probably is aware, McAllister Ranch is now going to be a recharge. It's owned by a water purveyor, and it's going to be a recharge, and an arterial road along the railroad tracks from Buena Vista to the west is just not required anymore because the greatly reduced traffic by McAllister Ranch going away. And real quick, Mr. Johnson mentioned there's been several tracks, the track that, sorry, the person that attends today just to the south, there is reduced setbacks in that tract at 6578, and there's quite a few cul-de-sacs and houses that are agriculture land to the south. So just across the street from Pensinger, there are reduced setbacks against the egg zone.
Does staff want to add anything to that or not? It's fine, I don't need any more, Clark.
No, I was just confirming with our traffic representative, and they've reviewed the request and are supportive of it.
All right. Before you sit down, I wanted to ask you another question regarding the, your planned timeframe for work.
As soon as this is approved, we have a tentative map that will follow this, that will go to Planning Commission probably in a month, and then I will be authorized to start my engineering and design. So I would anticipate that within, you know, nine months, we will have approved plans, and then ground will be broke. And I want to, I do want to, since I'm up here, I want to address one thing that was said. This project as a planned unit development is specific. It has to be developed as what was shown in the staff report and in the presentation. There are no multi-family units in this. These are all single-family dwelling units on smaller lots, and that's one of the reasons we have this big community area, because as lots get smaller, there's no backyard. So we have a very large park and trail system, you know, for people to go and congregate and have an open space to, you know, take their kids and play. But these will all be single-family homes for sale, not for rent.
Thank you for clarifying that. And just for the record, these are homes for sale, or are they going to be rental?
They're all on single-family lots, every lot, and they will be homes for sale.
Chair Bashir Tash, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coman. Commissioner Neal?
Hi, Mr. Blaine, can you come back? So these are single-family residences. What, I know there's a range from about 1,200 to 3,000 something square feet in each one, right?
The houses or the lots?
The houses?
Yeah.
Okay, so what's the lot size for those?
The lot sizes are about 3,000 square feet, so they will all be two, 3,500? 3,500. They'll all be two-story.
Okay.
And so that's how you can get, you know, a good house size on a smaller lot, is to go two stories. And with the zone modification, reduce setbacks. It should be noted that, you know, Bakersfield's doing a great job right now of the 2045 new rise, the new general plan, and staff has worked really hard to create some new zones that allow this. The reason that we had to do this right now is currently there is not a zone in place that we can have a smaller lot. So we've worked with staff to come up with the PUD to be able to have these smaller lots. And, you know, once the new zoning ordinance is in place, we would not have to do any zone modification because it would fit the setbacks in the zoning that's going to be in place for products like this.
So can I ask you a question, then? With the reduced setbacks from 30 to five feet, does that mean that some of these properties will be five feet from the sidewalk, the entrance?
The five-yard setback is like a rear yard setback, and it's a side yard. We've reduced the side, no, there will still be, they can be pushed forward a little bit, maybe to, I think we said to 10 feet, to 15 feet to the front, but these will be alley-loaded. So a great example of what this will kind of look like in Bakersfield is University Park at the southwest corner of Ming and Gosford, a very similar project that had alley-loaded. And then you come out the front door, and there's a sidewalk and paseo systems that will lead you to the recreation facility at the park.
Got it. And is there, I feel like the houses are already close together, the five feet on each side of the fence. You're asking for three feet on one side and five feet on the other.
We've checked the, with the fire department, and there are houses throughout the Central Valley and agencies that allow down to six feet of separation between the houses. And so just to be able to get the houses a little bit bigger, right, you know, we've asked for that. So you can have, you'll have three feet on one side, five feet on the other, three feet, so it gives it a little bit more sense of, you know, of having a little bit of property in your backyard.
And I also had questions about, and this is for staff, the arterial designation of Pacheco and how that will be no longer for this portion of the street, but what about the rest of Pacheco or the space in between the developed portion and this?
So, and excuse me, so which area are you speaking of?
So this is the subject property. On the, I think that's west side and the east side where that, where Pacheco runs, is the rest of the street on the east and the west of this property still going to be designated arterial?
We're going to have our traffic person come up to the, with the slide.
So this is, this is the section that's going to go away, and that's the only arterial right now, so it is not arterial east of it or west of it. Because of the West Ming specific plan, there is another road that was planned here just north of it, so it's not right on the railroad track.
Okay. All right, well, that's good.
So, and as we talked about, everything here was McAllister Ranch, and that is now all water recharge.
Got it, okay. And when you mentioned the phrase innovative design, that's, and that was also used in the staff report, what do you mean by that?
Because these are small lots, it's that missing middle that we've been talking about for a couple of years, so this is more innovative of what you see. It's innovative to Bakersfield, I should say. It's, as Blaine mentioned, it's used elsewhere, but it's more of an innovative design for Bakersfield.
Thank you, those were my only questions.
I have one question. How much money would be made via the developmentist for the school, school, local school that's around it? This project?
I'll answer some of that, although Blaine may know more. Different school districts have different school impact fees, and residential properties are some of the higher fees that they have, and keeping in mind that this would provide for actually more, more single-family homes, those fees will actually be quite high. So there'll be, there'll be quite a few fees going to the school district.
A project like this that you've seen before, what was, what did you think, ballpark?
Those fees are paid with building permit, and I don't get involved with actually building permits. I will say that I've met with the Panama Buena Vista School District, and they have desires for a school within the Old River Ranch specific plan, and we've met with the developer and the owner of the Old River Ranch specific plan and given them some areas that they might be interested in a new school.
Okay, great. Commissioner Neal just informed me that it's $4.78 per square foot of residential, so that's very helpful information. Thank you, Commissioner Neal, and your attorney expertise. That's her job, that's right, she's good. That's the only question I had. Does anyone else, the request to speak is messed up? Do you have anything? No, okay. We're going to move on to the rebuttal period. Is there anyone who wishes to provide a rebuttal on this item? If so, please be prepared to step up to the podium again. Each side will only be given five minutes' time, so make sure your comments, make your comments succinctly without repeating the remarks of previous speakers to ensure that everyone wishing to provide rebuttal comment has a chance to do so because there is only five minutes. Those in favor have five minutes first if you'd like to step up and say anything.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think I've made my rebuttal statements through some of the questions that you guys asked. I appreciate the questions, they're very thoughtful, and I appreciate and hope we get your support. Thank you.
Thank you. There's still about four minutes and 49 seconds left. Does anyone else have anything else? Seeing none, we'll move on to five minutes for the opposition of the project. If you'd like to step forward, you got five minutes. Yes, sir? Anyone else? Okay, I will now close the public hearing on the item and return to the commission for comment and action. You'll have to nod at me, the request is messed up. Ladies first, Mrs., or Ms. Neal, Commissioner Neal?
Thank you. It is very exciting to see a project that is more dense, and also where the home sizes are a little bit smaller. I always say this, this is my thing. I feel that every person in our city that works a full-time job should be able to own the home that their family lives in. And in order for that to be possible, we have to build smaller because we just, there are many wage earners in our city that just don't make enough to afford to live, to own the home that they live in. I didn't ask you any questions about what this will cost someone, and I did that intentionally. This is the first, a first for us, and I'm very curious to see how this goes and what you sell them for. And, but we need more projects like this, and we need more affordable, smaller homes. So I hope that your price point is not something that would only attract out-of-town purchasers, but people that live here in Bakersfield and want to buy in your community. So thank you for your work on the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Neal. Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you, Chair Bashkretash, and thank you, Commissioner Neal, for your comments about that, and thank you for the tutorial on the school impact fees. Can we put up that map set from the, from the presentation, please? Page three? I don't know how to make it happen on my computer, so I don't make, how to make it go up there. One more. Okay, thank you.
You're looking for that one?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. So this, this map shows the approved, not approved, but the land zoning for all that area around that development. So to Mr. Boykins, there are a lot of developments going to happen around your neighborhood, and it's unfortunate, it's, I'm sorry, you know, that you guys weren't prepared for that, but there is a lot of development going to be going on around you over the next, whatever timeframe that is, five years, 10 years, whatever. And so these lots are already entitled for residential, so we're really only talking about whether we're going to allow a higher density. And the state of California and the city of Bakersfield has put a big emphasis on housing and more dense housing. And so with that said, you know, we support these kinds of projects. I wanted to talk to you about the school impact fees because I did a little quick math based on the information Ms. Neal gave us, and this is going to generate about $5 million with impact fees to schools alone for this project. So one of the ways to get more schools and to get better roads around a neighborhood is to build more houses. And so I think that you'll see that the school situation will hopefully improve. I think that traffic and the roads around your home will improve because they'll be required to improve Pensinger and probably some improvements on South Allen as well. And eventually, South Allen will go all the way through there, so that traffic will maybe go the other way from where you're at, so. These are the kinds of projects that we'd like to see in Bakersfield. We were so used to building on, you know, 10,000 square foot lots that people panic when we say we're going to build on a 3,000 square foot lot, yet we do it up and down the state of California every day, and they're building really, really nice projects. So this project, to me, is well-suited for this community and this location, and so I support this project, and when it's appropriate, I'd like to make an emotion to approve item 5B.
Thank you, Chair Bashkretash.
Thank you. Before I, well, as for a second, is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Commissioner Biddle?
I know densities are scary, but I live in a duplex and in that middle missing, middle missing housing, and I'm not that scary of a neighbor, and I'd really appreciate having a smaller yard that I wouldn't have to take care of, too. So it's exciting to see projects like this for people that are just starting out and maybe just want to be able to get, get something in their name, so thank you for looking at these types of projects.
No more comments or questions. Does anyone wish to second Mr. Coleman's motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Neal. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion passes with Vice Chair Kater and Commissioner Cor absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you like to read the appeal process?
Yes, although this is just a recommendation, you're making a city council, so this does automatically go to city council for consideration. I would note that it still can be appealed. This decision can be appealed to city council. You can submit that in writing to city council in care of the office of the city clerk within 10 days of this date's decision, providing the precise basis for the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item seven, communications.
Does staff have any communication items at this time?
I would just note, again, I appreciate this busy week with planning commission meetings. Our next one is in two weeks, November 2nd.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item eight, commission comments.
Any Commissioner?
I do.
You do? Oh, good, sorry.
I have a conflict for the November 5th meeting?
Second.
Second meeting. I have a conflict for that meeting, so.
Okay, thank you for letting us know. We, hopefully, we will have a little, during my comments, we'll have just a little bit of a presentation. Some may find a little bit interesting, but it's nothing that you're needed for, but you can watch it if you'd like.
It's always interesting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item nine, adjournment.
This meeting is adjourned at 6:17 PM on October 19, 2023. Thank you so much for everyone that came and participated.